So the October 7th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will come to order. We want to welcome everyone, obviously, here in the room with us and also anyone joining on the phone or via Facebook Live. Please remember to keep your phone line muted until called upon and we'll give you the code when that time comes. And now I'd like to ask everyone here to please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So under correspondence, since our last meeting, we received applications from both Monique Ferrer and Stephen Castiglione, who are interested in serving on the Board of Police Commissioners. So we're just officially entering that into correspondence. And now we can move forward with the interviews. So in total, we received 13 applications. Five of those have withdrawn prior to tonight's meeting, including Karen Carlson, Elizabeth Tadden, Lindsay Pike Fairchild, Stephen Castiglione, and Brian Betts. So for the remaining ones of you here, thank you, and we look forward to doing these interviews. We're going to ask each of you the same four questions. We're going to ask for everyone, as we touched on briefly, to limit your total remarks to 10 to 12 minutes, which should give you just about three minutes of question to be allocated at your preference. We will have a timer going at the 15-minute mark, and we'll ask that you do kind of stop wherever you are if you're still going at that time. We are just trying to be mindful of everyone's time. We're going to go in order, for anyone watching and wondering, of the applicants in order that they were received. And so that is how we're doing it. We debated alphabetically or order in which they were received and thought that might be the most fair. And then we will be waiting until the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is next Wednesday, to make any final decision. So this will be the interview process. We'll kind of have our process and we'll each individually think about it over the next week, and then at the next meeting, we'll make the decision. But again, thank you guys so much for taking the time. We also just wanted to highlight, since all of you have taken the time to apply, and we're so grateful, and you each have such different and diverse experiences, but we only have one seat. So we did also just want to take the moment to share with people that we'll be sending this out after the next meeting, after the decision is made, as well. But we do have a number of other boarding commissions that have openings that make really important decisions for the town. I won't go through the whole list we have here, but ranging from the Stormwater Task Force, the Waterfront Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Economic Development Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, just to name a few. So just keep that in mind, and if you want to learn more, just let us know. In terms of, so we will go through the interviews now. So Raven, you were our first applicant, so that's here still, so if you don't mind joining us up here, and then we'll go through the questions. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so the- Yes, thank you to the three of you select women for having me here today, as well as Stacy and the rest of the applicants. I really appreciate the opportunity, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. So I'll start to turn once I ask a question. So the first question is just for people at home, and you have it in front of you. We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity? And when you're responding, if you don't mind expanding on what roles you played and what impact you think you had?
Yes. So in the past, I have served on numerous boards. From my years in college was Los Angeles Pierce College and UCLA. I was members of the Black Student Union there. I also was the founder and also president of Council of African-American Students. And I oversaw membership of over, I would say, about 70 individuals and put on different activities for over 200 people all the time at our university. I also was the vice president of scholarships, had the pleasure of working with Phi Theta Kappa, which is an international honor society. And I traveled around different places domestically, representing the organization as a vice president of scholarships for my college. And I really enjoyed the ability to not only represent my school, but also to represent scholastic achievements of many marginalized groups. So anywhere from low-income housing students that we had to LGBTQ and people of color that did not have access to adequate academic programs, they were able to excel and have maintained a GPA of over 3.5 to maintain and membership in those organizations. So I facilitated a lot of one-on-one mentorship with them and also helped them in social activities as well. I would also say I really enjoyed working with the Urban League from, I would say, from LAPD all the way to across country and Atlanta Police Department. Ever since I was eight years old, I actually have been volunteering with various police departments. And so that has afforded me the ability to not only relate with people in the community, especially the young people, myself being a youth at that time, in my teens, as well as being able to be mentored by police officers in my teens and in my twenties. And myself, just as an aside, I come from a family of over 10, I would say, 10 to 15 police officers and firefighters. So I have immense respect for police officers, although some of them were very busy in my family, and I was busy with my film schedule as a young child actor, so I wasn't able to have as much one-on-one time with them. So when I did my volunteering with the Urban League, it gave me, it afforded me the opportunity to be able to actually work one-on-one with police chiefs and police officers in different programs, like gang retention programs for young people. And so working with the DARE campaign, teaching young people about abstinence and health care, those were things that were very important to me, being an advocate for safe sex, but also teaching young people that they do the option that I chose, which is abstinence and pro-marriage if they chose that path. And just promoting academia, responsible citizenship, and love of country, and respecting police officers. That was really important. And I was happy that I was able to be a catalyst to bridge that gap between the young people and the people of color and with the police department at a young age. So that was a blessing.
Thank you, Raven, so much. And June, you didn't take the last one?
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, the questions are the same, but we're taking turns, so Danielle doesn't have to ask the same question.
Yes.
So the second question is, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary functions of the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners?
Yes. I think it is imperative to have leadership in all facets of our community, especially when it comes to public safety. And I believe that, you know, just from my own witnessing in different meetings that I've actually watched via Zoom and now in the COVID era, I've seen that primarily it's been a lot of focus on traffic and traffic insignia, traffic signage is very important. Understanding the difference between, okay, this is an SPC, which is a state, you know, a state, an SPC, rather, a State Police Commission sign that's mandatory versus a yellow advisory sign, for example, dealing with things like that. I would also say I also noticed a lot of talking about police accountability with the new police bill being passed and their administration administering basically the accreditation process through that with the police chief and understanding all the different facets, the body cams and, you know, speaking with the word of finance to basically fund the body cams, and then you also have to deal with, you know, the redaction process and all of that. So I witnessed all of that and understanding that process as well. And different events, all the cool concerts that happen in Stonington Borough, to, you know, events probably in Mystic Village, and then also, you know, in my area, here in Pawtucket as well, and we have to deal with zoning and traffic and parking and all of that, and making sure you have crowd control and those types of things. I also saw as well that, you know, when you have wonderful officers like we have here at SPD, they do well and they get to the point where, you know, the chief is like, "All right, you're ready to be a sergeant." So another part of the process is doing the interviews, because I know that the sergeants, they have to complete a written exam, then they go to the board of the Board of Police Officers here, and they have that process, then they come to the Police Commission as well. And so from there, we would have to, as the, you know, Board of Police Commissioners, interview those sergeant applicants, if you will. So there's a lot of different facets to it, all the way from traffic to crowd control and events, parking. You've got a low-income housing project that's coming up right over here on Coswell, I know of. And so Mr. William Sweeney had a wonderful meeting with them in regards to their civil engineer and the parking permits and all of that that's a part of it. So I look forward to dealing with the well, you know, that variety, he was array of different things that are thrown at, you know, the board's plate. So, yeah.
Thank you. And just to give you, before Deb goes, we're-
Can I, can I pause her?
Yeah.
Because she's not on the cam, we're having an issue with our camera.
Okay.
If it's not going to bother anybody, if we just pause her real quick and then like readjust.
No problem.
Because the only person that can, like, I can see on Facebook, the entire board can be seen.
Oh, then, okay.
But I think it's because we're only using the one speaker and it's not capturing. So will you, be okay if I adjust your table and adjust the camera?
Of course.
Sorry. If not, then people can see her.
Yeah.
Oh, that can roll the sun. If they can't see me, it's fine.
Everyone can see who's talking. So maybe if you can pop your chair here, can you just see me here?
Yeah.
Over here, Danielle?
Yeah. I think it might, you just want to be like angled between the-
Angle more?
This, right?
Angle it this way?
I'm trying to see all the, yeah, right? Is that the right way?
Very good.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no, no problem. I can roll with the punches.
Or is it the other, it's the other way, right?
Other way.
The other way, sorry. More towards us.
Shifted.
So which camera, that camera that's working?
The camera that's sticking out.
This is the camera that's picking up.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I was gonna say, you're doing excellent on your timing. You're almost right at the, just a little past the halfway point, but we're restarting. So, sorry. So now, thank you for going to the floor.
Sorry, thank you. Oh, no, it's all good. Okay.
Question three, please describe your relevant professional experience as well as any specific skill set you would bring to the Board of Police Commissioners?
Yes. My specific skill set would be one of, I personally have lived a little bit of everywhere. Having grown up in the entertainment world, it's kind of like being a military brat. So you kind of live a little bit of everywhere. And I grew up in Atlanta, Georgia, and also Los Angeles, California, for the most part. But I have never called any place home, home, other than Stonington, other than those two other places. And I came to the area because my husband is from here. He's a Stonington Bear, proud one at that. And I can't, we moved back to the area here to take care of my sick mother-in-law. And so, you know, family comes first, gotta be there for mom. And once we moved to the area, we've been here now for about three years. And we moved here when I was pregnant with my little guy, who's two now. And I just fell in love with the area. I knew the coastline. I love the town. I've had a beautiful experience with, you know, many people here. And I really think that it's important that we have diversity to, in our leadership, anywhere from commissions to boards to local government, to reflect that of our community. And so one of the things that kind of, you know, broke my heart, I would say, is I, you know, in the light of everything that's been going on, a lot of the racial unrest and social unrest that's happening in our community, in our, in our country, rather, right now, I spoke with a lot of young people and people of color in the community, and they have told me that they don't feel welcome a lot of times. And they do feel, you know, marginalized, if you will. And my position would be basically to be a voice for that marginalized Stonington resident. I would like to be an advocate for, even though myself, I'm straight, but I am a huge advocate of the LGBTQ community, and also I'm a big supporter of homeless people in our community. I have a wonderful relationship with Russ Cartridge at the One Center just over the state line. And I would love to interact with, you know, working with, you know, anyone from the PNC to our Human Resources Department to create more, better equality programs for our community. So we want to have people of color, the mentally ill, and women in our community. I mean, it took, you know, how long, over 300 years for us to have all three of you here as females running the town? And what a blessing that is. And I want to be able to have more female leadership on our police commissions. And not only that, I just want to, you know, basically loosely quote the Board of Police Commission's chairman, Mr. Henry Gorts. He made a statement that really hit home to me in one of his meetings. He said, "Instead of people, you know, vilifying someone that they disagree with in social media or in the press," he's like, "I want to invite you to take part in your community." He's like, "Run for a board or a commission." And instead, change from within. You can steer change from within. And I just, I loved that statement from him. He's a very wise man, and I just, I loved that comment, and it really resonated with me, and I said, "Oh, I'm up for the call." And, yeah, I just, that's what, that's what this is about to me, absolutely. And I, I also did a film when I was younger called Freedom Song. And in that film, it is about the Student Nonviolent Ordinance Committee. I know a lot of people know a lot about, you know, the N double A SVP, or they are very familiar with SELC, Southern Christian Leadership Conference, from Dr. Martin Luther King. But not a lot of people are familiar with SNCC. Recently, they know a little bit more because we just had the passing of Representative John Lewis, and he was a member of SNCC. Well, the film that I did, Freedom Song, with Danny Glover, when I was little, I was the first black girl, I portrayed the character of the first black girl who was a member of SNCC that was arrested for doing fitting at lunch counters, at Woolworth's Lunch Counters. And that really taught me, that process, about being actively nonviolent and creating peace with silence and just your own person, and radiating a spirit of oneness and unity with evoking love. And so even though we were just actors, we weren't the real deal, we went through a training process during it, it was nonviolent training. And so they actually poured milkshakes on us and spat at us and used curse words, you know, profanity, all of that, and called us racial slurs, just to teach us how to just maintain that center and just breathe and focus on your mission and God and unity for all. And even though that was acting, it actually, some of it really resonated with me as a young person, and it's still a part of me, of who I am today. And I think that it teaches you to love your neighbor, and even when you disagree with someone else, I think that it gives you the ability to hear them out and come to some sort of common ground. And I know that Sergeant, Sergeant Keith Peavy and also Officer Jeff Hunter, I have so much respect for them, because right now, they are currently, for the last few months, they've been doing a lot of training sessions with their officers to teach them these types of, of, basically, personality traits, to have their officers to maintain non-emotion and to not use excessive force. And so I think that that really harkens to the movement of nonviolent training. Yes, we need to have police officers that are there that are armed, because they're blocking in situations we don't know what they're going to be met with. But we also need to have officers that are treating every individual regardless of their race, socioeconomic, or gender background, or gender identity, with equality. And I think that that is really indicative upon the police commission to oversee that and to make sure that that is actually being enacted and following suit with that in leadership.
Thank you, Raven. I think for the last question, you mostly touched on it through your earlier examples, but essentially, if you wanted to summarize for us what positive impact you would hope to see as your legacy five years from now when your term on the police commission was over?
Yes. Um, you know, I would like to see as a legacy that, if for nothing else, everyone can say that I was a fair person. That's what I'd like to, to leave as a legacy, that I was fair and I was a woman of inclusion, including everybody. And that, that goes across party lines and gender lines and all of that, and definitely harkening to our cause of allegiance. You know, at the end, it says, "Liberty and justice for all." And I'd like for my legacy to be of that, that it mirrors those type of standards. Diversity inclusion is so important in our community, and I would like to also exceed the expectations of our community. You know, you have a lot of people that they call in, they say, "Oh, my gosh, it took me 45 minutes to back out my driveway, you gotta deal with the traffic on such-and-such street," or, you know, "They're gonna have this event, they're gonna have a concert, they're gonna have alcohol, but then I don't know if they're gonna have the police there, we need to have regulations." We want to make sure that we create a Stonington that is basically respecting and inclusive of all the expectations of its citizens. And we need to be able to set a precedent that we are a loving community, but number one, we are a safe community. And that's what I believe, and that's what I would like to have my legacy be.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you're welcome to stay, but also I know you have a little one to get back to too, so don't feel like any pressure to stay. I know you can also tune in from home, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Robert, you're next. I feel it more towards June. Yeah. Thanks.
It cuts the person off on the first few, but that's like, she was on there, hopefully, we walked up only halfway. So if you want, if you want to hit her, she's in there.
Was her, was her entire voice was recorded, though?
The voice is great, yeah. That's okay. The voice is perfect. Um, oh, hey, Robert, thank you, so same drill. Um, we'll, we'll get started. Let me just restart this. Okay, thank you. So, same question first time, we'd just like to know about the partner experience that you've had with nonprofits, volunteering on boards or commissions, for town or otherwise. And then as you respond, if you could also expand on the roles you played and what impact you feel like you had.
All right, I'll try. I'd like to introduce myself first. My name's Rob Germer. For those who don't know me, I'm 55 years old. I live in the Old Mystic Section of Stonington. I've been there for 27 years. I live with my wife Melanie. We've been married for 30 years. She's employed by the state as Lieutenant with the Department of Corrections. I have two children, Sarah, who will be 29 this month. She's employed by Stonington Police Department and is assigned to the Patrol Division. My son is 27. He's an Explosive Ordnance Disposal Technician in the United States Army, currently stationed at Fort Fanning, Georgia. We believe in public service with will. Regarding myself, I grew up in the city of Groton. Graduated from the University of Connecticut in 1987 with Bachelor of Science degree in education. I taught at a private school for a little over a year, then I worked various jobs in construction. In 1990, I was hired by the Groton Town Police Department. I served there for 28 years until I retired in 2018. After I graduated from the police academy, like everyone else back then, you went right to patrol. Back then, you worked rotating shifts every 28 days. I had two very young children, so I worked basically every day. There were days when I only worked, maybe a five, 10 days off a year, but that was fine. While on patrol, I various assignments, community pleasing before it was in vogue, kind of, bike patrol, field training officer, statewide narcotics, school resource officer. I mean, I did the gamut of things. In 2004, I was promoted to the position of detective, which they say in our mission statement is responsible for more serious crimes or high-profile crimes. I see someone from the DA's here. I've used them quite a bit to help me resolve things. As, in the detective division, I became the head of the Dinnon County Detectives Association. So I can kind of go to answer this question. I know it sounds good to you to head, but basically, the longest tenured guy ends up getting that. But my responsibilities for that were to communicate between our local, state, and federal partners and share information. And it's a lot of work. It's very time-consuming, but it's important. Ironically, with the advent of electronics, cell phones, which we didn't have when I started an email, you'd think we'd be able to communicate better, but our communication skills have actually decreased, I think, because of this, because we're not used to talking to people. And it's, it's a problem. It's a problem in law enforcement. I can tell you that. Since my retirement, I basically enjoy it. I have two beautiful grandkids. I help my wife do her projects, which are basically making soap and candles now. I exercise, I take advantage of the community, I ride my bike, I kayak. And what she said was, what Mr. Gorts said, does make an impact. He said, "Hey, you gotta get involved." And I've always wanted to be involved more actively, but because of my job, one, I couldn't be, because we had political restraints. I mean, technically, if I was in downtown Mystic and someone asked, and I was on foot patrols, and, "What's a good restaurant?" I mean, we were, we weren't even really supposed to, you know, give a recommendation because of good authority, so. So basically, throughout my career, I've served on different things, like for oral wards, done oral wards, written questions, been involved in policy updates. I know with the DAAL Law Group, I know Stonington PD is involved with that. They want to get accreditation. That takes quite a while, a lot of time, and you really do have to assign someone specifically to be a liaison with the DAAL group, whoever they choose to use. So in saying all that, because of my 28 years of experience and in the beginning of my career, you don't see the big picture, you're just worried about your patrol area. How do I handle this DWI or this, you know, that's what you're worried about. But as you go on in your career, you begin to see the big picture and what an police administration has to go through, and I can touch on that later on. Basically, I just wanted to introduce myself there. So if you want to go on to the next question.
Oh, great, thank you. June, do it.
Oh, yeah, me, okay. Yeah. All right, so the second question is, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Stonington Board of Police Commission?
It looks like the primary responsibility is Citizen Independent Review Board. I mean, that's what it says in the description. It looks like it was established in 1974, amended in 2001. Because I had to look at that, because number four was, you had to be retired as a police officer for five years. But that doesn't include me, because I work for another agency. It includes Stonington. So I had to look at that to see if I was qualified, you know, eligible, not qualified. I think I'm qualified. I know I'm qualified, eligible. And then I had to look at the conflict of interest, because my daughter works here. And there's no conflict, and I'm just, I call things straight as I see them, so that's not an issue. It's important that they have a review process, and I think it's important that you have people on the board with some law enforcement background. I know you deal with Mr. Shana See, Mr. Shana See. And the reason I say that, I don't think maybe all five members have to be retired law enforcement or judges or anything like that, but you do have to have some experience. If you look at, I think, one of your other boards, it has openings, I think there's three vacancies, maybe it's the Board of Appeal, uh, Building Board of Appeals. In that particular one, you have to have three people on that board from a certain profession. I think it's architecture, structural engineer, and maybe someone from the trade, plumbing, electrical, whatever it may be. So if it's important enough for that board and commission, you need to have someone with a law enforcement background on this commission. Again, it doesn't have to be a complete wash, because you don't, you won't, you want to get other people's perspective. And I have a perspective from a law enforcement officer, but I'm also a citizen. I'm impacted by public safety in this. Now, I've lived in this town for 27 years. Like, I don't really leave it, to be honest with you. You know, I'll go down River Road on the Mystic, the Groton side of Mystic, so. But I think it's important that we have it. There's transparent, people don't understand the police commission. I've read things and heard things like, "Oh, they're under the Board of Selectmen." Well, not really, because you're detached, because you could have the impact of politicizing it. Groton handles their government different. They have an RCM and a town manager. And I've seen what can happen when the town manager gets in, I've worked for five chiefs, and I can see what happens when they get in the chief's ear, or you don't have a strong chief. So the way it's set up here, in theory, works good. In practice, I don't know. I'm not part of it, so that's where I stand on that. Go ahead.
Okay. Please describe your relevant professional experience as well as any specific skill set you would bring to the Board of Police Commission. I mean, we talked about some of this, but-
Yeah, I know, I can ramble on at times. But again, it goes back to my training experience as a law enforcement officer and as a citizen within the town. As part of the detective division, I was partly responsible for forming the Regional Community Enhancement Task Force a few years ago. And our primary mission back then was the battle of the opioid epidemic. And I thought we did a good job. We're a little different. We did things differently out of the box, but it was effective. Someone tells you, "I did this," and they use "I" a lot, don't listen to them, it's not happening. If you're not part of a team, you're not gonna go anywhere successfully. But we combined the local municipal departments, it was Stonington, Groton Town, Groton City, Waterford, East Line jump on board, ledgered right after they became their own PD, and it worked very, very well. Unfortunately, it ended not because of the workers, but because of the administrations couldn't come to different MOUs on liability and stuff like that. But I've had the opportunity to work in Stonington and patrol these streets, to do search warrants here, to meet the people, to have contact with them. My daughter went to school here, so I'm, I'm familiar with it, that gave me a chance. And then one thing I read that you said, is, is it Chesbrough?
Chesbrough, yeah.
Chesbrough, I didn't wanna pack your name up.
Everybody does.
I think you mentioned one point, that, making a suggestion that commissioners and board members in leadership positions should, we should consider sending them to bias training or sensitivity training. I think you're right, but I'm just wondering, where has that been? Because as a police officer, and I'm going back to nineteen ninety, I had to go to cultural sensitivity training, ethnicity training, de-escalation training, um, dispute resolution, sexual harassment training. And I would talk to other professions, teachers, like, "We don't do that." And these weren't one-offs, these were like, every year, you had to go. And if you didn't go, and someone else went, and they had an MOI method of instruction, they would train a trainer to save money. So, you know, that's, you know, a practical point, I do have that training. And although it's been two years since I got on the job, I haven't forgotten it. And to be perfectly honest with you, it's important. Not every class is great, normally you take away something from one class, that you get a one thing, okay? But for me personally, I pretty much learned everything I needed to know in nineteen seventy-three when I was eight years old from my parents. Treat others the way you wanna be treated, be respectful, don't keep your hands to yourself. I, I mean, those are simple things that we lost in our society. And this isn't rocket science, we should be able to do this, so. I mean, I, I can't see without glasses. Uh, skills, okay, I mean, my other skillset, the strongest skillset I have is I listen. I really do. But you have to listen on the road to be a police officer and survive. Yeah, you could fight with anyone, and when I came on, that's really what the job was a lot like. It was very physical back in the early nineties. But if you listen to people and understand them, you can get a lot further along with it. And I understand change needs to be made, but don't make change just to say, "Oh, we're changing and we're doing this, we're virtues," we're, I don't believe in that. And I think change sometimes can be painful, and I think part of the painful thing is, it's gotta be slow to endure. Of this equation, yeah, you can lose twenty pounds for that wedding or that high school reunion, you can crash diet, but a week after that, you've got that weight back. Because it's not a lifestyle change or a philosophy change. Change is slow, it's like negotiating a contract with a PD. They're gonna want something, you're gonna want something. Well, you're gonna need the middle, and someone's gonna get their foot in the door. "Okay, now we're setting up for next year." Well, that's what you have to do with the society.
Thank you. And then for the final question, just again, so five years from now, if you're on the Board of Police Commission, what do you hope your legacy would be?
To be honest with you, I, I'm not a legacy guy. I don't, I've never really wanted thanks for doing what I've done. I got a bunch of awards, pins, papers, things from the governor, you name it, I don't even know what they are. I think I used to give them to my kids for Halloween decorations. The only thing I've ever wanted someone to say about me was, and it doesn't have to be, he's a good guy, I respect him, he worked hard, and he did what was best for the community. That's it. Because I'll be forgotten, clearly. I worked twenty-eight years, I told the chief when I left, I said, "I'm leaving on Thursday, come Monday it'll be like I never worked here." And there were people that I worked with, John Graves, his daddy, Mike Lewin, the best guys I ever saw, and when you leave, you just kinda, you become forgotten in a way.
Well, thank you, this was really hopeful. Um, and thank you, and same to you. You're welcome to stay, um, for the whole time, or if you won't be offended if you need to leave.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your service. Um, so next up, we have Carrie. Thank you, Nancy Carrie. Like, the Price is Right is coming back, I heard, in a few weeks, it's like, for doing this. So we'll keep repeating the questions, even though you have those, and now everybody's probably can memorize them by now, but, um, but thank you for joining us. And so the first one, yeah, is just to share any pertinent experience, um, working on any boards or commissions or volunteer service, and then to touch on the impact you feel like you've had.
Oh, thank you. My name's Carrie McWilliams, I am a, um, retired veteran Navy wife. Um, that's what brought us to the area, I've been in the area of Pocketuck for over twenty-something years. Both my daughters were raised here, my oldest daughter was a Stonington Bear, and the other child took part of the lottery system and went to one of the local STEM schools and graduated last year. Um, we still reside here in the community, my husband and I, he, um, like, most Navy guys, end up at General Dynamics. So we are here and have been here. Um, I really, um, have served on several boards, but two I would like to uplift. One of those boards being, um, as a twenty-plus-year veteran educator, um, starting my year, my life in New London, um, I actually worked on the Policy Subcommittee on, as part of the New London Board of Education. Uh, as an educator, they aren't served on the board, but I was part of the Policy Committee to help the board. Their policies for, um, school districts, um, for their first, second reading, and do things that were best for many marginalized voices that represent that community. Uh, as we know, um, in some of the more affluent parts of our community, people tend to send their children to, uh, private schools or parochial schools and do not take part in the public service. So, um, I'm a big advocate for students, that's where, um, my heart lies, which brings me to the second board that I think I made the most impact was Rhode Island School Principals Association. I served on that executive board, oh, I don't know, seemed like forever. Uh, being so close to the Rhode Island line, I worked in, um, Providence, Rhode Island as a transformational principal, on the rest of the top. And while I was on the board for Rhode Island Association of School Principals, um, I worked on a national level and a local level, just to advocate for principals and the resources that they need, that would, um, also dwindle down to our schools and our, and our students. Um, that is a role that jolled a lot. Can you imagine being a principal right now? I'm hybrid, I'm in school, I'm out of school, I'm on, I'm online, I'm not online. So, um, we, so those were the two boards that I worked with, and of course, they're diverse communities, you have, um, people who have more socioeconomic opportunities than others, you have to bring them together, come to a common ground, get people to understand that equity does not mean that everybody gets the same thing, but everyone gets what they need. Um, so, those were my two biggest roles that I, I think I did the, the largest impact, because I felt that I impacted more people, and I could see the fruits of some of that work afterwards. Um, I also serve on the board of my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta. Um, I'm a member of the Providence Alumni Chapter, and I know you guys are going, "Why does this lady keep going to Rhode Island?" You guys, because of two houses from Rhode Island, it's just an easier drive, there's nothing, you know? We do have chapters, uh, all over the world, but that's the closest one in the house. So, um, on that, um, on that board, I serve as an, uh, the parliamentarian, so my role there is to do what parliamentarians do, keep things in order. We also work with the NAACP and a lot of joint ventures, and the National Council of Negro Women, um, anything from voter's registration drives to census, um, making sure people get out and, and take the census, food drives, food pantries, um, and we also raise funds to give scholarships to students, many students who are first generational college recipients. So, those are the things that I think are most impactful. I have served on other boards, but again, things that were impactful for me, please tell me that was just the one.
No. It's an old one.
Um, okay, somebody wanna ask, I'm trying to read it, I mean, I feel sorry, I do read the same question.
So, um, so for the second question, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Stonington Board of Police Commission?
I mean, I think it's an oversight immediate, and I think it goes, uh, you know, the people go to work, it's a review commission. Um, yes, I read everything online of what their duties and responsibilities are, but, um, did they ever think any, any day in age that they would be talking about body cams and, uh, different types of accountability policies? I think it has to do whatever the city streets needs them to do at the time, that's befitting. Yes, we can look at the bulleted parts, but I think everyone forgets that last bullet that's on most job descriptions, and any other thing that's deemed necessary. So, um, I think that we're in a time now that we do have to listen, and we do have to put boots on the ground to what needs to be done. Um, it will, it will take time, and I think it is a lot of oversight. Um, you know, where I live, I'm telling you, if one more person goes up that ninety-five round the wrong way, I just don't know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna scream. I pass it every day, I don't understand it. Um, but it is sad, you know, it's, it's really sad. I was actually working at Hill House in New Haven, um, the coach that passed away in one of the accidents there, and it, and I went in the next day to work with the staff, and it was just, it was just awful, just seeing the aftermath of that. But those are some things that, you know, you have to do, and I'm sure that, you know, they sit here and they think, "Well, what else can we do? We have like a do not enter sign," and I, I look at some of the commentary. Um, but aside from that, I think it is just a way, it's the pulse, and it's a way to have a, if you would say, a conscience for what goes on. It's a board to help make sense of decisions that are made, that might not make sense to the public, but it's a way to have that vetting and that, um, checks and balances, is what I would like to say. When something just doesn't work, we have to have someone who makes a decision, or who, people who make a decision. But they have to have a respect for, um, people wanting to be heard, and that, and at the end of the day, people just want to be heard sometimes.
Okay. Okay, and again, you talked about some of this, um, describe your relevant professional experience, but also any specific skillset you would bring to the Board of Police Commission.
Yes. Currently, I work for a nonprofit think tank out of, um, Portland, based in Portland, Maine. Um, and there, I just today, um, helped to train over one hundred teachers from Maine on anti-racism and, um, racism in America. Um, what happens is that, um, I think I have a skillset for working in diversity training. Um, it's, I've been an educator for over twenty-something years, I've been a school principal, I've been work, I've been a, a superintendent cabinet member. Um, so, I've been in the field of education most of my life. My undergrad degree was in Political Science and International Law Studies, um, and then I decided to do graduate work in education. So I have, uh, a passion for, um, working with people and making sure that people are heard, and marginalized voices are raised, and looking around the table to see who's not seated at the table, but this policy or this system or structure will impact, okay? And getting to that person and seeing how, um, they need to be heard and need to be representative. I have, I have a skillset to work with people, talk with people, hear what they're saying, and sometimes rephrase it so that members that I am working with, my other colleagues, can actually hear the messages trying to be said. Because we have to understand, as a people, um, a minority group of people, um, when you have four hundred years of oppression, then another two hundred and some years of Jim, um, I'm sorry, sixty years of Jim Crow, all the way up to twenty fifteen, you know, this is still going on. And yes, it's, it's slow, it takes time, but you have to understand that people who weren't afforded the same opportunities as others, at some point in time, they wanna be heard, and they can only express themselves in the way that they know how to express themselves. Um, I, I too was told to treat people the way I wanna be treated, but you know what? My family treated me the way that I should have been treated. Everyone's reality isn't that, and we have to realize that. There are people with mental illnesses, there are people who come from broken homes, that if they've always been hit, if they've always been yelled at, if they've always been treated poorly, when a police officer or a school teacher or a principal comes upon that broken person, we have to take a moment, and we have to see the human in front of us first, and then get to the policies and procedures, and then look at the systems and structures that got people to the point where they are. That's what we have to do as a, as a race, as a people in this, in this community. Um, and I think I have rhetorical skills, sure. I love to write policy, and, um, I'm one of those people that like to codify. Um, I've been, uh, on several grants for writing, for seeking money and funding from different organizations. Um, and I think I'm a pretty mu- a people person, and I pretty much tell it like it is, you know, I'm, I'm pretty authentic with my thoughts. Um, my grandmother said, "A little long in a tooth," you know? It's, you're gonna be who you are, or, or you're not, um, you're only as good as your word.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, just, yeah, the final question about kind of what positive impact do you hope to see, use the word legacy or not, but kind of positive impact do you hope you would've had over your five-year tenure?
I would say, like I said, any position that I'm ever, I've been ever in, um, you, you leave with a, a sense of humility, and you leave with a servant attitude, but you leave with a purpose and a passion. So I've always gone to any position that I've ever wanted to be in, and what I've always wanted to do was leave a place a little bit better than I found it. That impact may be big, it may be small, it may be that, you know, no one else get killed on, on ninety-five for the next, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. If that's the legacy that I leave, that's the legacy that I leave. But it's my purpose that whatever I put my hand on, I wanna leave it better than I found it in the beginning. Because I think if everyone lived with that attitude, that this world would be a much better place. I wanna say for Stonington, and as far as the police officers here, my experiences with them have been phenomenal. I have not had any, sometimes I didn't agree with them, 'cause I'm also a student, I'm a surrogate parent, and I have had officers, um, in some meetings, and they have worked my nerves, but you know, I have actually, you know, you still, you see, you treat people with humility, and you talk to people as they're human. I have to see their side and what they're saying, um, and then I, I feel stressed. I say, you know, "Students don't have time to get in trouble if they have something to do. And what worked for you when you were here, when you were fifteen, isn't working for the students?" Nah. They, they, they don't, they don't wanna do a hayride, you know? They, they don't wanna do that. So I think, um, sometimes you have to agree to disagree, and then come out what is going to be best, and always look for the person that you're serving. It is not about me, it is not about my political interests, it is about the people who we are serving. Whether it is the homeless, the youth, whether it's the underemployed, whether it is just, you know, someone who is tired of too many trucks coming down their street. It's about the people you're serving. And when you keep that foremost in front, then you'll, you will leave the legacy that you wanna leave.
Thank you so much, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, look at her, nice satter up. Thank you, student.
You're welcome.
So again, just to kick off, kind of past experiences with boards, commissions, volunteer work in particular, um, and really touching on the impact you feel like you had in those roles?
I'd like to have the last two applicants kinda talk a little bit about themselves.
Yeah.
So I, I'm Steve Freitas, I'm married, um, we have, my wife Lori and I have a blended family, we've got teenage, five teenagers between ages of seventeen and thirteen. Um, we live in Pocketuck, I was born here, um, went to college at Evervonal School of Design in the late eighties, um, graduated from Stone's High School in eighty-seven, went to college in Providence, came back here, and I've lived here ever since. I worked for eighteen and a half years at Songlist in Waterford, um, and then I worked six years in, um, up in Ridgefield, Connecticut, um, for a major sign company, and recently I got hired at Electric Boat, so hope to start there in early November. As far as, uh, local commissions, the most recent commission I belonged to was a small, um, small boat commission, um, out of the town of Stonington, and has nothing to do with the town, other than, uh, we leased a little bit of land from the, um, Village Improvement Society, and rented out spaces for a really inexpensive fee, I think back then it was about thirty-five dollars for the whole season. So I went to those board meetings and was involved in that. I, this is really the first time I'm throwing my hat in the ring for, um... So, I went to those board meetings and was involved in that. I, this is really the first time I'm throwing my hat in the ring for a town commission. And it's good to know that there are other commissions out there that need to have vacancies. Going way back to high school, I was in the student council all four years and I served as a president my last year. And some of the things that I started back then are still continued today. One of them is, there's an annual Thanksgiving dinner where we went around, we were the first class to do it. We went around and we asked local businesses for, to volunteer food and we went around to the cooks and the cooks donated their time to cook the dinner. And of course, had singers come in and it's something that the Golden Ageers and local senior citizens came in and had a holiday dinner on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And as far as I know, they're still doing that. And we also started something where we would meet with the Mystic Golden Ageers at the Como and we brought them cookies and met with them and talked with them and gave them cookies.
Thank you.
So, my question is, what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Stonington Police Commission?
As a, as an oversight to the day-to-day activities when, when something comes up where the town gets involved. And looking for giving, seeing that the police get the equipment that they need or advocating, listening to their, what their wants are and seeing if there's a way to get them what they need so that they can perform their duties safely and effectively. And also as an oversight to promotions within the department that the chief brings forward.
So, please describe your relevant professional experience as well as any specific skill set you think you could bring to the Board of Police Commissioners?
My background is as a designer and I know that's nothing that's, that could be really needed other than maybe having an open mind. I do have over 10 years' experience with wayfinding design and signage design. There's been traffic, I've been in touch with DOT to do traffic studies and stuff. I have to review contracts to make sure that we're getting what we are paying for. And I've been a project leader for 10 years and, I'm sorry, I've been a project leader for over 20 years and project manager for the past 10 years. I'm familiar with day-to-day managing projects, day-to-day depending on what needs to be done.
Thank you. And then for the final one, the same thing, kind of five years from now, what do you hope to have achieved kind of your positive impact on the Board or the town?
Just that I listened and did my best and was fair.
Stephen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we have John next, thank you, John. Take your time.
All right, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I'll try to talk through the mask. I'm one of those people that have difficulty wearing the
Yeah, feel free when you guys are up here, you know, you're six feet away, yeah, you're
I'm wearing mine, yeah.
All right, I just want to thank, thank the Board for taking the time tonight to go through this. I do want to thank Henry Gore for his service on the commission. And I want to thank all the commissioners for the volunteer work that they do. I know this is an important job. I know you, Board of Select Women, have a very important job placing the next commissioner. I want to thank the other applicants, obviously great people to volunteer to work for the town. I am an attorney and I can't avoid saying that, it's the gorilla in the room for me because it asks about qualifications. And I'm gonna apologize ahead of time for my immodesty and my bluntness and I'm asking the timekeeper to hold me to the time because I'm definitely gonna expire every block. So, let me get that out of the way. About my experience, in all seriousness, I'm an advocate and I returned as an advocate three years ago. I was a judge in the Superior Court for over 10 years. I was a lawyer for 23 years before that. I've been in town since 1988 and it's been a wonderful experience. And my time in public service goes back to 1982. And frankly, 39 years dedicated to the rule of law. You have my application, but since this is being televised, I think it's important to note. I started working in Washington for the United States Government as an investigator. Early on, I sought to focus in the criminal law. And I also sought to focus in the prosecution because I felt that that was an area of discretion. They had a lot of ability to do good. And I worked in the United States Attorney's Office, the Criminal Unit, as a clerk. At the same time, I worked in investigation in the Public Corruption and Organized Crime Unit, the Chief State's Attorney's Office. And that's where a lot of my, my belief system developed. And I came out of law school and I worked as a young prosecuting attorney here in New London County. I moved into Stonington where I made my home since 88. And once I had the opportunity, although a public official, I volunteered for the Charter Commission back in 1988. Somewhere in a cardboard box, I've got a certificate of appreciation. I worked with then attorneys Ted Ladwig and Jerry O'Malley, helped writing the town charter, which in part granted the authority for this commission vis a vis the ordinance. And I always felt a very strong desire for public service. Getting back to the question, in terms of my work on commissions and the like, aside from that, I was also in the DWI Citizens Advisory Committee with the Pawtucket Neighborhood Center. I was on the Board of Directors in the 80s. And throughout my time as a citizen, I coached, I was a football coach, I was a soccer coach. Hate soccer, but I had to do it for the kids. I got three kids and I'm married. My kids all went through the Stonington system. And I can tell you, I've lived in every section of town. I've lived in Pawtucket a long time now, proud of Pawtucket, shout out to Patty Cohen, my fellow Pawtucket resident. My kids have gone to school at West Vine, West Broad, Dean's Mill, Stonington High School. Every one of those schools, I was very involved. I was the annoying parent that was the chaperone, I certainly was the coach. I chaired and was president of the Board of Trustees at the Mystic Community Center. As such, we, that was before the Y was there. We conducted a lot of good activities in the community, including the Taste of Mystic. I'm used to working with people. I was vice chair of a political party in this room. And yes, I'm a flip-flopper, I've been a Democrat, I've been a Republican and I've been an independent. And the reality is, I've had a passion for getting involved and that's what I've done. As a judge, Governor Malloy appointed me to the Judicial Review Council, which oversees judges and workers' comp commissioners. It's a very serious body. We review complaints and do discipline, including termination. I know about that. Years ago, I should tell you, I specialized in negligence work as a lawyer, criminal defense. Had cases where Detective Emery was the arresting officer and I want to thank him for his service and also Captain O'Shaughnessy. For over, over 18 years, I was a criminal defense lawyer. Significantly, my third area of practice was representing law enforcement officers in every department in this county, state police, FBI and Secret Service. I represented an officer's, more than one officer in this room in termination proceedings. I have the ability with that background, one of the charges, and I don't want to jump the question, is involving discipline issues with officers, advancement, I'm familiar with that area. I have expertise in the area. Also, as a judge, I was on the Law Enforcement Council. I am on a first-name basis with every local police sheet. I was the only judge ever to serve ex officio on that body, which is a cooperative group working to enhance equality of police work, community relations and the like. I currently, and the only other organization I'm involved with by choice is the NAACP. I'm very active with them. Some five years ago, two years before, I departed the bench. I met Bernard Lafayette, he's the one name I'm gonna drop. Some may know Bernard, he's Professor Emeris of Law at U. Maryland. And I went to a symposium on Justice Marshall at my alma mater, Quinipiac. And Reverend Lafayette marched with Reverend King, got arrested 28 times, twice in confinement. And I vowed then, when I get out, I'm gonna work with the NAACP. Why? I spent two years as the chief habeas judge in Rockville, dealing with sentenced prisoners serving 40, 50, 60-year life sentences. I learned after 30 years, I served in criminal courts in Hartford, presiding Hartford Criminal, New London, Norwich, Danielson, elsewhere, Manchester, all over the state of Connecticut. The system's very broken. And my goal when I joined NAACP, I said, "I don't want to be on your lead ahead. I don't want to be rubbing elbows with politicians, been there, done that." My goal was to mentor some young men of color, brown and black, because we, they need help and they need guidance and I've been doing that. And I've been doing that quietly, without any fanfare. I can work with the commission and I'm gonna continue to work with the NAACP. I chose not to work with professional organizations, I used to be involved with trial lawyers and the like. I'm in a serious law practice, I do serious work, I'm with the Reardon Law Firm, my partners are serious. Before that, I was with Roman Wigan, we were a serious law firm in Hartford, a New London office, many corporate clients, but I believe I can lend that expertise, teamwork, the legal mind. I have to tell you, I don't want to see the town incur legal bills, it pains me. I'm not pretending to be general counsel to this Board of Police Commissioners, but I like to steer the ship clear of the rocks when able. There has been lawyers previously, Pete Rotella, Ray Trevissachi. I think I could help the members of the Board, Mr. Elmer, Mr. O'Shaughnessy and Bob Tabor. I'm familiar with all these gentlemen. And I've had, I've known the chief for over 30 years in many capacities. When he was a rookie, I was a young prosecutor, when I was presiding judge, I helped increase some activity here in town with drug interdiction and the like because every town's got issues. So, that's what I hope to bring. And frankly, being in, being biracial, I was very active. I was the second Asian-American judge in Connecticut. Since my appointment, we've had numerous judges that followed. I've worked in diversity with the judicial branch, I was on the Speaker's Bureau. I now, at present, go into schools, I talk about addiction, we go into high schools, myself, Jack Malone, CEO of Lebanon Pines and SCAD. And we interface with young people. We talk about the ills of the court system, trying not to get kids wrapped up in that. My goal with the commission is to make that bridge between young people and police. I just want to say one other thing before I leave the topic. I talked with an officer who is spearheading the program right now in Norwich, Norwich PD. It's a great program and I'm familiar with the officer, known him a long time, which bridges the community and the police department. We need to enhance and open up lines of communication and I hope to bring that.
That was fantastic, I feel like you touched on a lot of it. Maybe to circle because you have like three minutes left. Do you want to build a little bit more on kind of that, what's that positive impact you hope to have over the five years?
Sure, first of all, we have a police accountability law that is law of the land. People talking about tinkering with it, they're going back to special session, they're not gonna touch it. So, what does that mean? Stonington has to deal with a $500,000 issue, body cams and dash cams. I have worked and I was literally lobbying New London Police, New London City Councilors when they were voting on this. Got it done for New London. This has been talked about for years, cameras are your friends. We have to, gotta come up with the funding and it's a big ticket item. There's $180,000 in new police cruisers that are budgeted for this year. Thankfully, we just did a communications project, updating the IT. These are serious issues, unfunded mandates. The whole, I was with another chief the other day, two nights ago, who lives in my neighborhood and he said, "You know, John, I'm concerned about guys hesitating. We now have a change in the consent law." I know about that because I helped train prosecutors back in 1982. I edited the Little Blue Manual, Red Manual rather, that's in every cruiser. I know what goes on in a stop, I have trained on that, I've trained police, prosecutors, judges. I have been involved in every aspect of the court system, not to sound like a know-it-all, from investigation to arrest to arraignment, to trial, to sentencing, to post-sentencing, to return to the community. What do we want here? We want a police department properly equipped, properly trained, that does the job right, that the public trusts. As a commissioner, I want to be open to the public so people know that we will listen and take their concerns seriously and take action. And I think in terms of this commission, what I'd like to do is have a department that is the best and continues to be the best equipped and trained, that everyone respects. As a judge, I worked with all the departments and we know the good ones and the not-so-good ones. And Stonington's got a good reputation. We want to make sure we go right into the next decade with all the tools we need. And we have to improve, it's not, it's not a choice here. We have to improve with not only perception, but our relationship with the minority community. That people need to feel that they are treated fairly always and it's something that's a reality, not just a promise.
Thank you, John. Do you guys have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, I answered question three.
All my time. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, John, so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, people don't feel like you're being rude if you do have to leave. We know it's a long night and you're volunteering your time here, so thank you, thank you, Stephen. So, Patty, you're next, thank you so much. And so Patty, you know, feel free off the week as we're going through, you know, the questions so you can kind of roll as John did, but we'll kick it off with kind of that same first starting question of just talking about any boards and commissions or volunteer capacity and the impact you feel like you had?
Sure, let me just take a minute and introduce myself. My name is Patty Cohen and I think
I feel so many Pawtucket residents tonight.
My husband and I have been here for a long time, we've raised our three children, proud mom of three Stonington bears. And, you know, I've been involved in the community in a variety of ways. In the past, I spent some quality time, maybe five or six years, on the board of Puff's Little League. I was gonna be down at the Little League field all that time, I might as well start volunteering and helping out. And I was on the board there doing what they call player age org, doing all the registrations, keeping track of all the players, their eligibility and then all the things that go on once they go past Puff's Little League into other tournaments and things like that. I'm also on the Board of Stonington Education Fund. And if you don't know what Stonington Education Fund does, is it fills the gap where the education budget fails. So, it does fundraising and the ability to provide mini-grants and other programs and other equipment to teachers where they don't have the room in the budget. So, for example, we provided candles to children who needed special reading attention. Different teachers will come up with a project and it might be a couple of hundred dollars. We call these Apple Grants. And we were able to give money back to the teachers to do those little extra things that they couldn't do based on budget constraints. Now, it's great, right now, I am, I just recently dropped down from vice chair, but I'm vice chair of an organization called TFC's Hope. It's an organization based up in Ledger, it's a local organization founded by parents whose daughter has an inherited retinal disease. And the idea behind that is we're trying to get exposure because it's a rare disease. So, we want to get exposure for rare diseases, try to work on research for rare diseases and it's been phenomenally successful. Our big event, which would have been next weekend, I believe, is canceled this year, obviously. We're doing some virtual things, but over the past couple of years, we've been able to donate up to $50,000 to retinal research. We've been able to supply grants to researchers who are actually working on the frontlines, trying to help shore the blindness for these people if they're affected by it. Another organization I spun about with just about two years ago and it's been so fulfilling for me. It's called Severn Leadership Group. And the Severn Leadership Group started with some retired naval officers out of Annapolis. And now they brought a division of it or a group of it to And now they brought a division of it or a group of it to Broughton as well. And it's primarily leadership training for naval junior officers before they take their first command tour. So in particular, we work with submarine junior officers. And they're going all out of submarine, and they're either in charge of the engineering or they're in charge of the navigation or they're in charge of the weapons. It's their first true command tour where they are in charge and they have staff reporting to them, and they're responsible for all of that. So we do a lot of training with how to build a great team, how to be a good leader, how to be relatable to the people, but still be in command. And one of the really neat things is that we get to have a mentor-mentee relationship. So I have mentored two naval junior officers. And I will say, everything related to Severn has been an amazing opportunity. I get as much out of it as they do. But it was funny, my first naval officer, I'm one of the, well, I was the first woman senior fellow based out of Broughton. And I'm also, now we've expanded, but there weren't that many who were non-Navy, who've never had a naval career, hired to doing this. So my first mentee, you know, this first night, I said, are you disappointed you didn't get a naval officer for your mentor? He goes, I'm going to be honest with you, a little bit, yes. And I said, that's fair. I expected that. By the end of our mentee relationship, before he went off his tour, he was like, I'm so glad I didn't get a naval officer. I'm so glad I got to work with him. So it's been a great opportunity, and that has given me a lot of training. I've done mentoring training, diversity and inclusion training, emotional intelligence training. So it's just given me a lot of opportunity to learn a lot more and how I can be of service to other people.
Thank you, Patty. My turn.
So what is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners?
Sure. I mean, I know some of this is repetitive when you go six. But it's the key civilian role that's related to law enforcement and the charm of Stonington. And I think it's critical for the police commissioners to collaborate with the Board of Software and the Board of Finance. And I think we can't do anything in a vacuum. The committees and the commissions have to work together. I mean, as we alluded to, you know, the new acts for equipment and things like that, it's going to have to be a collaboration with the Board of Finance to figure out how we're going to be able to fund these things, how we're going to be able to do things. So I think that's really critical, that it's not a standalone commission. While it is, you really have to be collaborative with the other commissions and elected officials in town. Hiring and promotions, really critical. At the last Board of Police Commissioners meeting, we talked about, you guys were getting ready to interview candidates for promotions. It's talking about building the police department in the future. We, I mean, buzzwords we've all heard tonight, diversity, inclusion. We're building the next generation of our police department. We have to make sure it's diverse. We have to make sure it's inclusive. We have to provide the training for these officers that allow them to do that job. Budget is an issue. How do you negotiate the new equipment and the training and the support for the new equipment? And then you've got the development part. You've got new developments topping up all over town. There are safety concerns. And then there's also, we tend to forget about it in the time of COVID, but school safety. I hope nobody ever else gets this, but last year, I got a text from my son at Stonington High School, we're in lockdown. And it was because of the shooting in West Hurley. I wasn't watching the news. I wasn't paying attention. To get that from a 15-year-old is a scary thought. I want to know that our kids are safe in this community. I want to do everything in our power to make sure they are.
Thank you, Patty.
So please describe your relevant professional experience as well as any specific skill set that you bring to force.
Sure. My background, my career has been in finance, financial analysis, software development. So primarily investment management and data analysis. I have a master's in business administration with a concentration in finance. So I've spent a lot of time looking at budgets, doing financial analysis. The other part that I do is because I've worked in software firms, and I negotiate between the users or the consumers of the software and the builders of the software. So I have to spend a lot of my day negotiating, okay, you want this, and they can give you this, and how do we both get to a place where you're both happy? So that negotiation has really helped me. And whether it's functionality or budgets or scope of the project. Okay, here's what we can do. So let's take a piece that we can do and complete, and then move on to the next thing. So prioritizing and negotiating is something I do daily. The other thing is, in my last job, I worked for a large bank. I was a subsidiary of a large bank. You know anything about working for banks? Training, 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 mandatory training, mandatory training. Probably once a week, you've had a mandatory training class. And a lot of them had to do with regulations, and they weren't, you know, all that much fun. But there were some great ones. And one of the ones I took was unconscious bias. And then I got to go to a conference and hear a woman who wrote a book about unconscious bias and see it and hear her in person. And Carrie, you alluded to it, the golden rule, treat others as you want to be treated yourself. And she actually had a different take on that. It was called the platinum rule. And it was treat others how they would like to be treated. You can't assume that somebody wants to be treated the way you want to be treated. You have to find out how they want to be treated. So I think I've gotten a lot of different opportunities to have a lot of different skills and opportunities.
Thank you. I use the platinum rule now.
It stuck with me when you said it.
It does, it makes sense. So again, just thinking about if you're on the board, five years, your term is up, as Henry says, what positive impact do you hope to have had?
I know it sounds repetitive, but being in a better place than we are today, navigating the stormy waters, you know, avoiding the rocks, and trying to offer opportunities for our police officers here in town, offering opportunities for our community to have a better relationship with our police department, offering opportunities just for this town to grow in any way it can. But again, it's not about a legacy. It's more about what we can do to make things better. And things are good. We are very lucky. We have a great police department. The majority of our police officers live in town. And what's really wonderful about that is we get to meet them as individuals. I can't tell you how many police officers I've sat on the sidelines with and been with, you know, been outside and met them. Some of them are my neighbors. So it's just hoping that we can even take the town to a higher level, but that we all really do it as we are.
Thank you, Patty, very much. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you, last two for waiting. So Lisa, you are next. And then Monique, you will be the last one. Probably have it down by now, but we'll kick off with the same question. But basically, just, yeah, could you share kind of your past experience on other boards and commissions or other volunteer work, and what kind of impact do you feel like you've had?
Could she be seen? No?
Oh, yeah, sorry. If you move closer to June, then people on Facebook can see your silhouette.
Is that better?
No. You have to like come a little bit more. You're going to get your life.
Yeah. Is that right? Me too. Is that any better, Susan? Yeah. Okay. Thanks, June.
Great. So I guess, starting from the local level, I've had the opportunity to either volunteer or serve on a number of boards and nonprofits here in the area. I was the executive director of what was then called the Mystic Area Shelter and Hospitality, now Always Home, as you may know it. So had the wonderful opportunity to work here locally, including with the Stonington Police and the Department of Social Services here to help our most vulnerable families with children. And I did that for five years. But at the same time, I had the chance as a volunteer to serve on a number of committees and other nonprofits. I would highlight, as things I'm most proud of, the fact that I was a pivotal force in establishing the Giving Garden at Coozie Farm, which feeds the, which sources fresh produce to the New London Food Bank. And also at Nest, I was one of the original people involved in helping them expand their footprint to New London, so that kids in New London who might have lived two blocks from the water but had never been on the water had that opportunity. So, and thinking about other local nonprofits, I've served on the Stonington Village Improvement Association. I've worked on the library board, Stonington Free Library, and Merrill House and a number of others. At the state level, I've served on a number of legislative committees related to my professional work. I'm currently a member of the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority Board, so it's a different level of board experience. And until very recently, I was the chair of the Governor's Task Force on housing and support for vulnerable populations, in which capacity I was working very closely with our Commissioners of Social Services, Mental Health and Addiction, also our Department of Corrections, the Court Support Services Division of our court system, and also a number of nonprofits from across the state, including Mental Health Connecticut, our Aging Services. So a number of partners in that regard. And the work that we're doing there, I think, is very relevant to what we're talking about here, the challenges that we face today. And a number of others here have talked about that in ways that I find really inspiring, from the judge to Carrie and also to all of our friends here who have talked about the fact that we're in a new era and we have to think differently about policing. And we have to think differently about how to help our police meet the needs of our population. That involves thinking about mental health, thinking about domestic violence. It's hard to talk.
It's really hard to talk. You can take it off. You're far enough from June, yeah.
I might do that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're totally fine.
But you find you can't quite--
I run out of time all the time.
So sorry. So thinking differently about how do we not just look at one set of tools? And I have great respect for the police department. Like the judge, I know Darren Stewart very well and have great respect for him. This is a terrific department. There's a lot to be proud of, but we can always do better. That's the thing that I believe. And with regard to a lot of the issues that are intertwined with justice, with policing, domestic violence, mental health, social needs. I think in Connecticut especially, we have to do better to weave together, to find partnerships outside of any one column of work. So I think it's important to talk about what the police need and how to have a good police department with regard to their internal resources and their processes. But I think it's also critically important that we think harder about how to partner with other resources. And I'm really proud to tell you, I've had some opportunity to do that even here in Stonington, where I had the chance in a previous position that I held as the head of our statewide coalition and homelessness, to work with the police department and with Leanne Theodore, who's a terrific director of social services here, to bring to bear additional resources, additional expertise to resolve a homeless encampment here in town. And it's more of that that I think we need to do. So what I would hope to do would be to bring my background of ten years in working in Connecticut in social services across the range of needs and together with law enforcement, to see how can we do better? How can we tap into additional resources that expand that toolbox for our police? And it's a different question here, perhaps, than in a bigger city like Hartford. But I think there are different levels of response, and I think we can be creative. I think Chief Stewart's a fantastic leader and an innovative thinker. So I think there's a lot that could be done here. And my expertise, both at the local level and I think at the state level, is the asset that I would hope to bring to bear. I'm sorry, it was a long answer.
No, that was great. And you touched on a lot of other things. They were, you didn't quite hit the halfway point. We still have more to go. Do you want to--
Yeah, so the second question is about your opinion of the responsibilities and the primary function of the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners.
So in my previous life before Stonington, I had the honor to be a U.S. diplomat and serve overseas, including in emerging democracies and war zones. And what that did for me was really underscored the central importance of civilian control of the military and the police. And I say that because that's a big concept, but we're living it right here. This is what it's about. And I'm very passionate about what that means. I have seen firsthand what happens when that goes off the rails. And that's where citizens have to be vigilant. We have to step up. We have to be part of the process. And so that's an exciting piece, I think, of what we're doing right now, today. This is democracy in action. So I think that's really significant. This is how at a local level, that civilian control of the police bears out and the way that others here too have described the fact that the police commission is an important venue for our citizens when they have a question, when they want to raise an issue. I think that's a really important function, and it would be an honor to be part of that.
Thank you. It's a good reminder.
No, I think you answered most of this, but I don't know if you want to add anything to your relevant professional experience and a specific skill set that you would bring to the commission.
So I would say a couple of things. I referenced my work as the head of our statewide coalition on homelessness. In my capacity there, I led our efforts across the state to reconceive of the way that nonprofits and state agencies, in conjunction often with police departments or local human service departments, were working to end homelessness. And in the way that we restructured things by really creating a much stronger emphasis on collaboration. And, you know, I'm very proud to tell you that Connecticut became a leader in efforts to end homelessness. We reduced in six years annual homelessness in our state by 40%. And that's not nothing at a time when many states are facing truly severe upticks in homeless, even before COVID. This is obviously a different state affairs. But, so I'm very proud of that work. But I learned a lot on the way about how to forge collaboration, how to forge partnerships, and how to make it work. So I think that's a skill set that I would bring to this work. I think also, through my work in diplomacy, and again, in often very difficult and stressful situations, including, as I said, with refugees in war zones where I've worked and lived, I think that experience, that level of management of stress helps you when you come into situations where there can be conflict. And certainly, when we're talking about law enforcement, that's always a possibility. So I think I've learned an important skill set there as well. And I think also, from serving on different boards, commissions, and legislature elsewhere, I've learned an important skill as well, which is to make sure to ask the difficult questions. I think sometimes we get too interested in making sure that there's harmony. Harmony is important, and it's important to support the institution that you're serving. But sometimes the most important way you do that is by making sure that the questions that need to be raised are getting raised, that that voice is being heard. So I think that that's something that in other settings, I've learned how to do.
Thank you. Sorry. Good enough. That's great. So again, the final question, same as everyone, five years from now, you're finishing up your term on the police commission. What positive impact do you hope to have had on the police or the broader community?
Yeah, it's great. You know, after leaving this room tonight, everyone here has said to make our community better. And it's wonderful to sit through a session where, you know, that's the emphasis. So of course, that's part of what I would have to say. You know, I think we all want to do what we can to make our community a better place. But to maybe home in on that, I'm actually really passionate about improving our system. So in, I guess, my scope, in five years' time, I would love to see Stonington as a real standard bearer of a new way to think about combining policing and the toolkit that it provides with other resources, so that we can really be on that cutting edge of how to more effectively respond when other types of tools are needed. And I think that's really possible.
Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful. Lisa, I've been very good with your time, too. I'm very impressed. Thank you so much. And so Monique, thank you for waiting. You're very patient. You're all very polite for staying through the whole thing. So Monique, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
So again, we'll start with the same question about the boards and commissions or other volunteer work and kind of the impact you feel like you've had. And of course, if you want to do any introductory remarks, you're welcome to.
Okay, thank you. My name is Monique Barrera, and I'm originally from New York. And my husband and I were relocated here to southeast of Connecticut, Pfizer. And we've lived here in Pocatuck for close to 13 years. Growing up in New York, I have to say, the police played a huge role in our lives. Growing up in New York, I have to say, the police played a huge role in our lives. I grew up in Brooklyn, we lived in a housing project and at a very young age experienced violence. And if it wasn't for our law enforcement, I really don't know where I would be right now. My family worked very hard and we were able to move to a home in Queens, where I lived most of my life. Relocated here when I was in my late 30s. But, so I have three children. My daughter, Thea, when we transferred over, she was a senior, so she wasn't able to finish school in New York. And Timothy, he came over as a junior, and then we have Kevin, our youngest. My two oldest children lost their dad on 9/11. And I have to say, the change that we're talking about now in our world, that was a huge change in our world. And again, my heroes are the police officers, the state troopers that were there for the families and military. So I have always had a deep respect for law enforcement and police officers. Moving from New York to Pocatuck, it was definitely a culture shock for me. I didn't see a lot of people that looked like me or my children, and they mentioned that when they went to school. And at first I thought, maybe that's a problem, but we found a way. And we found where we can find people that were like us. And there were some in the schools, but not so much. Now it's a lot different. I found a job at Foxwoods and I did see a lot of diversity and they gave me so many opportunities that I can say in New York I didn't have. And it just made life here a lot more comfortable and a lot happier for us. So, so I also just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. I've always looked for some way to give back and I think this is the perfect opportunity and I have time to give back to my community. So thank you. So I worked for Foxwoods for 11 plus years. I was the administrative assistant, executive assistant to senior VP, vice president, and lastly, with the president and CEO. And through working with, working for a CEO, basically as a 24-hour job, I was on call all the time. What I did accomplish with my time, because there wasn't a lot of time for me to do, you know, take time for my community service, but I did it through Foxwoods, working with the United Way, putting together fundraisers, attending fundraisers, giving back to Mystic Aquarium and the Mobile Food Pantry, and also putting together events for the United Way To Kill Society. And it was really about building relationships and I felt that Foxwoods gave me that outlet to do that. So I'm very grateful for that. And it also gave me a way, gave me an opportunity to connect with the community through Foxwoods. My boss is very visible in the community and I was always there. So I was able to be able to meet people, become more involved in whichever way I could. So I have to say that what I think I can bring to this position is that through Foxwoods, I was included in a lot of executive committee meetings, strategic committee meetings, and working with a team to achieve goals that we were assigned to. And basically, I was able to also learn from this great man that I worked for, who treated everybody from housekeeping to environmental services, that he wanted to know their name and he wanted to know about their families. And I really was inspired by that. I would say hello to everyone. I was not above everyone. We were the same, we were equal. And that went across the board. It wasn't just Latinos, it was everyone. So I'm really happy to be here and I hope that I can contribute what I've done at Foxwoods and continue that here, since I have time.
Thank you so much.
So the second question is, what is your opinion about the responsibilities and the primary function of the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners?
Well, as what's been said already, it's an oversight and I really would look forward to learning about what the board does. I mean, I've seen the responsibilities, I look forward to hiring and promotions and also just wanted to say that congratulations to Teresa Hertz for being promoted to sergeant, that's really great. And being a part of that is really important. I also am really good at looking at improving efficiencies, which we can always use improvement in whichever capacity that we work in. So, and I respect Stonington Police Department immensely. So I think that with the climate of the world now, there's a lot of subjects that I think that I can contribute to and bring light to. I am a good listener, I am objective, and I can, you know, share different perspectives than what was normally the norm here.
Now, I think you've pretty much answered most of question three, which is your relevant professional experience and any specific skill set you'd bring to the board, but if there's anything else you want to say on that, please.
Well, I feel that Stonington Police Department has a great reputation. Growing up, going to a police department wasn't something that you would do or feel easy or comfortable doing. But I find that here it is. And I think reaching out more to the children is a great idea. My three children attended Stonington. My daughter, all my children are successful. My daughter is a professional wrestler with WWE and she's famous and she's doing fantastic. And my son, Timothy, found a group of kids here where he worked on his music at Foxwoods. He worked at Foxwoods and he worked in their entertainment department. I feel like helping kids to find what they're good at and sharing that with others is amazing. My youngest son, Kevin, he is a junior at UConn and he attended Stonington High School. But he started, when we moved here, he was seven. So for him, he's not a New Yorker, he's a Connecticut kid. And he excelled in Stonington and I feel that, you know, when you talk about legacy, for me, it's the children of this community. And I know that if I give 100% of myself to this board, then I feel that I've done my job and I am really, you know, you say that we live in a bubble, but as a resident here from New York and, you know, just a different world for me, I just look forward to seeing us move forward and being, you know, having a more diverse community, which I'm seeing that slowly, and that's fine. And just knowing that I gave 100% to this position is what I look forward to.
Thank you so much. I feel you kind of like John covered everything really well, but if you want to add anything more about the kind of impact, you kind of just said it really beautifully right now, but if there is anything else you want to share?
Well, there was a, we did have an incident, our family, where the police had to be involved. And one of our neighbors was drunk and knocked on our door and was just arguing with us and then charged in and assaulted us. And our son was there. And I called the police and at first, I was a little nervous about, you know, who were they going to believe? Because that was the mentality that I had, you know, in New York. And I have to say, we were treated so great and they were very compassionate and they had a lot of empathy and we felt that it was taken care of so well. So when you hear about all this change that people want to make with the, want to change the police, defunding, and I just don't see a reason why when this police department is doing a great job. I mean, we have so many people coming here to live and it has to do with a lot of how the community is and how safe it is. I mean, the numbers speak volumes. So I've just been very, very respectful of the policemen and their job. And I have family. My sister-in-law is a Suffolk County police officer. My brother-in-law, he was an NYPD lieutenant. And my other brother-in-law worked for the FDI, he was a prison officer and now he's a special assistant at the Department of Justice. So I understand the life that they lead and it's a dangerous one. So I'm just afraid that any change that we make might not be the best for the safety of this community and for our police officers.
Thank you, Monique, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone for saying and for your interest in volunteering. I think as we said, just as a reminder, we will be sharing all the openings on boards and commissions. I wish we could take all of you, but there's only one seat this year. So we will be sharing other boards and commissions or if there's other work that you're interested in doing and volunteering, not necessarily through a board and commission, but to see if you have some specific projects or initiatives or efforts, really volunteer is what makes the whole town work. So thank you guys so much. A little pause now. If there's any comments from the public, you can press star three on your phone or yeah, we have two public members here. So you just want to say your names?
I'm Bob Elmer, Sean Seaman, the co-chairman of the Police Commission. I'm here with Bob Elmer, the members. And I want to say it's, it harkens me to see such great people that apply for the Police Commission. I'm sure that the selectmen are going to have a very difficult time picking the right person, but we look forward to certainly when any one of you is on the commission. And it's so heartening because we had times before, we only had one or two people apply. To see this many people from such diverse members of our community makes us feel a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Elmer, do you want to add anything?
I will, sir.
You're good, okay. Is anyone on the phone, star three? Nope. And just a reminder, anyone listening or listening after the fact, if you do have questions or comments, you can call Town Hall or email us. But as we said, we'll aim to make a very difficult decision by next Wednesday for our regular, they're all special meetings, but it's our more regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And so I guess the next, I didn't really get any comments from either of you if you want to say or share anything.
So I just want to say thank you and I just want to, you know, if we independently go through everything that we heard tonight, and that's why I wanted to be sure that at least your voices were heard on the recording, because we can re-watch it again. But if I have any questions, I'm going to reach out and I hope it's okay if I, we can reach out and have specific questions. But this is, sitting here has been, was a great experience. You are all very, very highly qualified, so I'm a lot of, lots of you in the next seven days. But thank you.
I just have to echo what June said. Thank you so much. This has been wonderful, you know, and as I said, I wish it wasn't just one position because you listen to everybody and your great experiences and what you can offer. And, you know, I'm hoping that whatever happens, you please all stay involved because it is exactly what we need to make our town a better place. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think just to echo the thanks offered, just to add, huge thank you to all of you. Very humbling, I think, sitting on this side and, you know, just your willingness to serve and you're amazing. Very different experiences will make a big difference in whatever capacity you take it forward with the town, so thank you. And I do just want to add a thank you. Roger Kaiser isn't here, but he has of our IT and helped probably a week ago set all this up and get everything ready in COVID technology times. And also to Stacy Haspel, who has been planning logistics and technology and wearing 12 hats during this and all their meetings. So thank you guys. And if nothing else, we'll be adjourned. Thank you, guys.